All the school board meeting to order. Mr. Treasurer, could you take role?
Sure. Colonel Evans?
Here.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mr. Neso?
Here.
All present.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That takes us to our district goals. We have three goals: student achievement, financial prudence, and community involvement. Every decision we make at the board, every decision we make up here, everything that's on the agenda works towards those goals. And we'll do our best to uphold them. We know that sometimes you have to balance one against the other to make sure that we stay in line with all three of them. So we'll continue to work on that, we'll continue to improve, and we'll continue to make sure that it's critical to everyone. With that, that takes us to recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Neso. We do have a couple of recognitions. And first, I'd like to ask our communications coordinator, Mr. Dan Faust, to come to the podium for our first recognition.
Dan, you want to come up here? Good evening, everyone. In a communications job, we rely on many individuals to help distribute our messages, both internally and externally. When I started in this position, I set up meetings with those who I thought would be important in helping me transition, as well as those who I hoped to begin building strong working relationships with. Ann Morrison from The Post Newspapers was one of my first people I met with. Throughout my first few months with the district, I have found Ann to be a very thorough and fair reporter. She's a dedicated reporter who makes herself available to every board meeting and other important events throughout the district. So tonight, I'm pleased to announce that Ann Morrison has been selected for the 2016 Ohio School Boards Association Media Honor Role, recognizing media representatives for fair, balanced, and accurate reporting on public schools, and specifically for our own district Strongsville City Schools. So congratulations, Ann, and thank you for your continued coverage of our district.
Oh, no, you've got to come through the door.
Thank you very much for your help.
I'd just like to concur to Dan's comments. Ann, you do a phenomenal job, and every time I read your articles, you make me sound good. So I appreciate the work that you do. And as Dan said, you've always been fair to the district. Whether it's a positive story or whether it's a challenge story, you've been fair. So we greatly appreciate all that you do for our city and our district, so thank you. And with that, Mr. Neso, I'm going to go to the podium for our next recognition, and I'd ask our preschool staff and our preschool director, Dr. Abud, to come join me, please. So I'm privileged to share with you, we've shared it a little bit through our communications, but over the past year and a half or so, our preschool staff not only has done the daily difficult and challenging work they do to educate our youngest students in the district, but to prepare for the State of Ohio Step Up to Quality system. So let me read you a little bit about Step Up to Quality, because it is extremely extensive. Step Up to Quality is a tiered quality rating and improvement system created to recognize and promote early learning and development programs that meet and exceed quality standards for health and safety for licensing requirements. Through an extensive application and review process, our early learning preschool has earned the highest rating possible, which is five stars. This five-star status recognizes learning and development programs that exceed licensing standards. It recognizes programs that show evidence of a commitment to continuous improvement, the continuing education of teachers, the use of learning and development standards to support children's learning, as well as relationship-building with families. So to earn five-star ratings, here's a few things that you need to accomplish. First of all, you need to exceed the learning standards for preschool. You need to have low staff-child ratios. Use child assessment results to plan activities that best support learning and development goals for each child. Share assessment results and create goals for children. Develop plans to support kids as they transition to a new classroom or a new educational setting. Partner with other organizations or businesses within the community to support children and their families. Have an active and organized parent volunteer group. Use input for families and community partners to assist in the program's continuous improvement process, and have accreditation by an approved organization. And you did all that, and then some. So please join me in congratulating our preschool staff for all of their hard work, dedication for the betterment of our district, and most importantly, for providing an exemplary educational foundation for our preschool students. So congratulations.
Thank you for your recognition, Superintendent Reiba and board members. I have to tell you, it has been my privilege to be the director of a preschool with the most caring and dedicated staff I have known. They work diligently above and beyond the requirements, as this five-star award can testify, too. The amount of energy, the amount of passion, compassion is incredible, and I hope that you would get to witness sometime. You're welcome to visit. But I have to tell you, on top of all of that, the additional requirements of this are daunting, lengthy, and require the amount of documentation that actually filled a five-inch-thick notebook. And then there was an onsite visit by two reviewers who spent an entire day going in and out of classrooms and interviewing staff as well. So the process, it was amazingly difficult, but so well-deserved, and I cannot tell you how privileged our district is to have this staff and those who could not attend with us. But it's been my privilege to lead them, and I thank them all for everything they've done, and I know our families would concur. So thank you.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you. Thank you so much. Hey, good to see you. Good job. Thank you.
Now, next, I'm going to do my report to the community, but feel free, preschool staff, to continue to move on.
Denise, one point, as we were talking the other day, is that we want to come back to the preschool for another school board meeting. We want to come back there so we can see and maybe walk around and check it out and have one of our upcoming meetings there, so that we can see how it's going and meet the staff a little more. So that'll be coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
One day, somebody will want to stay and hear my report.
We do. We stay. Sometimes we want to leave, but we stay.
Well, we are going to start our report this month. I'm going to turn it over to Jenny. Obviously, she's worked hard on our SPOT committee, and she's going to give an update as to something that's on the docket for the next few days. So Jenny.
Thank you, Mr. Reiba. As you know, our SPOT committee is an internal committee comprised of administrators, teachers, transportation, counselors. We have a lot of people that work very, very hard to do and facilitate activities throughout the district. And last year, our focus was on our internal staff, and this year, our focus is on our external community and community reach-out. And so one of the ideas that they brought forth was to thank, in the honor of Thanksgiving and being thankful, was to thank our community for all that you have done for us over the last year, and all of the donations of time and money that many, many people have provided to our district, so that we can have things like turf fields and a brand-new phenomenal flagpole at the high school. And our students are truly, truly grateful. All I asked, and all SPOT asked, was to provide thank-you notes. We didn't give much direction. We just said, we'd like, you know, anything that you would like to say thank you, and how you would like to say thank you, you can do. And so our grade levels, our middle school and our high school, and my office is inundated with all kinds of thank-you ideas and posters and banners and cards. And so what you have in front of you here is from Strongsville Middle School, and they did a banner here. And on the back of these letters are all of their signatures and everything, all the messages that they wanted to share with the community. And a lot of it is, "Thank you for building such a phenomenal school. We love our school. We can't thank you enough." So that is the banner you see in front of you. And then each of you have at your area a thank-you note, a representative thank-you, that we will be distributing more of these. We have a lot more to distribute to everybody that donated. And so Mr. Faust and myself and a few members of SPOT will be handing these out over the next few days prior to Thanksgiving to everybody that donated over the past year to us. So we're very proud of this, and we feel that it's very important to not only enjoy what we have, but to say thank you once again.
Thank you, Jenny, and thank you to the SPOT committee for their great work. Another group that we'd like to recognize is our Education Foundation. Our Education Foundation works closely with the district to help provide opportunities, not only in the form of scholarships and educational scholarships for our students and educational grants for our students, but as also special projects. And the last meeting we were at, the foundation has agreed to provide a $7,500 grant to the district to start our first elementary makerspace. A makerspace, I wrote this down so I can get it right, because it's a little bit of a different idea than, you know, you see in a lot of traditional schools. But makerspaces are creative and collaborative DIY spaces where students can gather to create, invent, and learn. They often have 3D printers, software, electronics, crafts, and hardware supplies and tools. And the space is a maker mindset of creating something out of nothing and exploring your own interests. These spaces also help prepare our students with critical 21st century skills in the field of science, technology, engineering, and math, as well as the arts. They provide hands-on learning, help with critical thinking skills, and boost self-confidence. Some skills that students may learn in a makerspace pertain to electronics, 3D printing, coding, 3D modeling, robotics, and even woodworking. So as we take a look at, we know in the world of education today, sometimes it's very scripted with the standards and the assessments that we have to give. It's important that our students have that time to explore, to get hands-on experiences as well, to help support their classroom work, as well as just individual exploration. So Vicky Turner, a few years ago, came with this vision of bringing makerspaces into our district, visited a lot of different sites to get some ideas. And this year, we are planning to roll out an elementary, middle school, and high school makerspace. This grant will provide all that Vicky needs to get the elementary started. It's going to start at Kinzner Elementary School. We also have a plan in place, and the foundation is working on an initiative this year to help provide additional funding for the middle school and the high school programs. Vicky's working on some grant writing right now to get dollars for that. And the foundation has another exciting initiative that's going on, but it's going to be announced in one of their press releases here, so I'll leave that to them. But very excited of the foundation's support. We've collaborated on a few different ideas, and I think truly their continued work is going to help our district become that premier district that we want to be for our students. So thrilled to announce $7,500 that they will be giving to the district here in a week or so to help get that makerspace off the ground. Another thing before, I just wanted to give some updates before our next board meeting. The week of December 5th, we are going to have six teachers, a principal, and an executive director from El Salvador come do a site visit in Strongsville. So Tanya Barber, a Strongsville High School Spanish teacher, has done a lot of work going down to El Salvador and working in their schools. And they came up with this idea about, "How about you come up our way one of these days?" So they were able to put it all together. They will be visiting Strongsville High School. They'll be visiting Strongsville Middle School, and also they'll be visiting St. Joseph and John to get to experience what an American school is like and how they can take some ideas about American education back into the schools in El Salvador. So Ms. Barber's done a tremendous amount of work to pull this off. We're very proud of her efforts, and we're proud to host this outstanding opportunity, not only for our visitors from El Salvador, but for our own students and teachers to learn from them as well. So we're excited about that. The other thing that I want to mention is we've given an update on our Strong Schools 2020 Plan each board meeting. One of those action steps was to use the efforts and initiatives of a citizens' campaign committee to work on our Issue 120 renewal levy. And I just wanted to take this opportunity, I know we've done it through press release and video, but to once again thank all of the volunteers for the continued excellence and the Issue 120. Very pleased to be able to share that we had a successful outcome to help our district keep moving forward, and we greatly appreciate the trust and support and faith that the Strongsville community has put in us to uphold the very important task of educating their children. So thank you to our Strongsville community again. Thank you to all of the volunteers for approving our renewal levy and keeping our district on the right path for the future. Last couple of things I wanted to share with the board and the community are just some updates. I don't think we need to announce it, but next week, we do have a few weeks off of school for Thanksgiving holiday. The district will be closed Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday next week. Also, on Tuesday, November 29th, the Education Foundation is having a fundraiser down at the Hoffbra House of Cleveland, right outside of Playhouse Square there, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. All food proceeds, 10% of that will come back to the foundation and again go to the good work that they're doing on behalf of our students.
Cameron, Dayton time again?
Tuesday, November 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. So if you're available, it's great food, great place, and if you can come out there and enjoy, it will also help out the district. Chamber Holiday Dance, our administrative team and many of our staff members are excited for that annual event. Again, it will be on Friday, December 2nd in Mashaws. We will be having our next community conversations. I can see the smile on George's face. He's ready, excited. It's district finances this month. So George and I will be at the Strongsville Library on December 7th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Anybody that would like to come out, again, an informal opportunity to come out and talk to us, ask questions. And again, we can talk about anything, but the focus will be district finances, and George will be there, spreadsheets in hand to answer any questions anybody may have. This is very early, but we want to do the best job possible of announcing that our kindergarten parent meeting has been scheduled for January 26th. That is a Thursday night. It's at Maraski Elementary School, like it's been for the last handful of years. Based on feedback and the work that we've done, we are going to change up the format a little bit. At 5:00 PM, we are going to open the doors, and from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, that is simply going to be a time when we will be there to accept deposits, the $300 deposit, to reserve a spot for full-day kindergarten. There is an optional meeting to learn about full-day kindergarten versus half-day kindergarten and which opportunity is best for your child. That will start at 7:00 PM. Before the meeting, we will stop taking deposits at that time, and if there's anybody after the meeting that wants to make a deposit, we will begin that process at the end of the meeting again. But Dan, and Aaron, and George, and his staff are all working on ensuring that we've communicated this. We've really done, I thought, a very good job last year, but starting earlier this year, so everybody is aware that January 26th, that's the first opportunity that families can reserve their spot in full-day kindergarten. It is a timestamped process, so when you're in line, we will stamp what building you want to go to when we received it, and we rank order based on that process. So we accept check there. Dawn, do we do credit cards at that meeting?
No.
So check, check, that's it?
Yeah.
Cash?
Yeah, check, cash. Gold. Checks made out to Strongsville City Schools.
So we will, I believe in my article in The Post coming up in a week or so, we'll have a little blurb in The Post, just announcing it, but just wanted to get that out there for everyone.
Just a quick question. Is the plan now for one section of full-day kindergarten per school depending on enrollment?
Correct. So this year, we actually have six sections. We have one at every building and an extra one at Kinzner, so that is the plan again, one at every building. But if enrollment dictates, we will come to the board about adding another section.
Okay, thank you.
The last update that I wanted to give on a date, or not an update on a date, but if you have an opportunity and board members at the end of the board meeting or folks that are in attendance, Dan and some of his helpers throughout the last week have done a great job displaying student artwork around the building. So we had a lot of bulletin boards around the office space here. So we asked last year all of our art teachers to submit to us two or three pieces of art that they would think would be nice to put on display. We worked with Pacotans, and they generously donated, they did all the framing for us and the protective sleeves for the paintings. So they are displayed across the building and just a phenomenal example of our student talent and our wonderful art teachers. They'll be on display all year. We will then give them back to the students at the end of the year, and we'll ask our art teachers for a new 16, 17 edition, or 17, 18 edition of artwork. So we're very proud of our students, and take a look if you have an opportunity. And that concludes my report to the community, Mr. Neso, unless there's questions.
Cameron, what day was your, the talk, the finance talk?
It's December 7th at 5:30 to 7:30.
No relevance, Pearl Harbor Day, right?
I hope not.
And where's it at?
It's at the Strongsville Library.
The library. Okay. Well, I just wanted to reach out. I mean, those talks you have are really important, and I think they're really good. And we're all thrilled that our levy passed, it passed 61%, a resounding, you know, vote of...
Handily.
Handily, let's say handily. And we take that as, you know, confirmation that we're moving in the right direction and we're moving forward. And 14,194 people voted yes, but 8,979 people voted no. And we want to make sure, one, we want to thank the people who voted yes. We want to thank the people who voted. And we want to reach out especially to those 8,000, almost 9,000 people who voted no, and just say, if you have questions, because I stood out in front of the board, and we all, many of us stood out in front of the different voting locations, and we engaged in questions as people walked in, and some of the concerns that people have were based on, you know, hearsay or grapevine, or they weren't really, they weren't completely accurate. And I'd say that if you have concerns, we want to hear them. And if you're one of those 9,000 people who voted against it, come to these meetings, come to, you know, come to the board meeting, send letters, do whatever you'd like to do. But, I mean, this is a great opportunity just to come up and talk with Cameron. George knows the finances inside out, and I'm sure he's going to bring his finance...
Budget book.
...codification by George, and he's going to bring that document with him, and he can answer a lot of questions. So if you have concerns or questions, we'd love to hear from you, because I think we can alleviate many of them. So just with that, thank you. And then I want to also just comment on the SEF and thank them for their continued support. The makerspace thing is such a great idea. It's so cool. Vicky, I know, I can see Vicky in the audience just smiling away out there. You know, they were a big, huge help on the Chromebooks and that initiative. As we move to a one-to-one in the high schools, that becomes less necessary, so they're shifting over, right? They donated a lot of Chromebooks, but now this is kind of, they're moving to the next generation of what we need, and they're leading the cause. So we really want to thank them for all their hard work and support as we move through this. With that, the community report's done. I don't believe we have any public comment? We do not. And that brings us to approval of minutes. We have the October 5th and October 20th regular board meetings. There are minutes to be approved. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Duke, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, George. Any discussion? George, could you take a role?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso? Yes.
And with that, that brings us to the treasurer's report, George.
Thanks, Mr. Neso.
You go to the podium, or...
Yeah, I have a series of items. The first one is the financial month-end report for October 31st. Exhibit A is the report, and I also have the supplemental presentation, which will So, Mr. Neso, as you said in the beginning of the meeting, our district goals: student achievement and growth, financial prudence, community engagement, and this is, of course, financial prudence. The next two slides I usually have in here is just recapping all of our financial prudence that we've done in the past and continue moving forward. And then moving on to the general fund summary. From last month and this month, everything's been pretty consistent and on target. I know this is a little bit hard to see, but there's a bigger blown-up page of this in the exhibit. Overall, from last October to this October, revenues are up, and it's primarily because property taxes, there's no change from October to November, but it was up due to less refunds being deducted out of our property taxes from the previous year. State aid is up from October of last year to this October, and primarily because of the TPP supplement that we received from OD. It was the portion that got reduced out of the TPP bucket, OD held us harmless and gave it to us through the state funding. This was for the last school year's amount. They gave us 80% last school year, the remaining 20% they gave us this school year. So it was just received in August of close to $300,000. And then other payments is up, which is more due to a timing issue. Last year, the money that we received from other districts for tuition, we received it late last year, it came in January, typically comes in the fall, so we received it on time this year. So that's why it looks a little higher in that, in other revenue. For expenses, we're a little higher, or we're trending a little lower this year compared to last year in salaries and benefits. Throughout the year, that's going to catch up and actually forecasting salaries and benefits to be higher. But right now, last year, we had 25 pays in the calendar, in the fiscal year. This year, we're having 24, and there was an additional pay at this time, through this time last year compared to this year. And all the other objects are pretty much on point. Capital outlays, a little bit higher this year compared to last year, but that was from a carryover coming into this year. Any questions on this slide? Moving on to revenues. For revenues, I forecasted 71.5 in the October forecast. Through October, we received 31.4 million. Projecting that we're going to receive about another 40.2 in revenue from November to June for a total projected revenue of 71.6. So overall, we're kind of trending on target. In the last column, I have where we're going to end up to what was the forecast. Not too far different than what was originally projected. So far on target, we still have quite a few months to go. Revenues by category, as you can see, the past three years, the past two years compared to this year, it's pretty much level from year to year. General fund expenditures, through October, we've spent and encumbered about 35.26% of our total appropriation of 73.1 million. Statistical spending range, we have four out of 12 months and eight out of 24 pays is 33%. So the 35.2 compared to the 33% benchmark, slightly higher. That's normal for this time of year, as a lot of the items are encumbered at the beginning of the year. Compared to this point in time last year, that 35% was 37.6, and the year before was 38.42. So we're more in line this year. So basically, we're trending on target. We're where we should be at this point in time. And expenditures through October, the chart on the left is the percentage where we're this year compared to the last two years, what's been spent and encumbered. And the chart on the right is what was actually expended in those categories. what's been spent encumbered, and the category, the chart on the right is what was actually expended in those categories. So, as you can see, other than salaries and benefits, which is slightly lower this year compared to last year, which is primarily due to that initial payroll, all the other line items are pretty much level consistent from, from year to year. Then our cash balance as of October thirty-first is twenty-eight point two million. Our unencumbered cash balance is twenty-three point nine million. To date, we've received nine point nine million dollars more of revenue than expenses, which is typically normal. Our biggest chunk of revenue is property taxes, and we received that four times throughout the year. Twice in, or not twice, in September and August and September and January and February. So, kind of see a spike, then it's kind of, as the chart shows on the right, where it kind of declines, the cash balance.
George, I have a question.
Yeah.
When I was looking at your monthly comparison, other objects was significantly less this year than last year, I think. Looks like it was eighty-two thousand, eighty, almost eighty-three, less?
Which, which chart are you on?
The monthly comparison of revenues and expenditure. Is that right? Under October sixteen, thirty-
Sure, wouldn't that be capital expenditures as far as repairs and things like that?
No, so for other, for other objects, I'd have to dig in to see why.
My question became when I, when I looked at that, but then when your expenditure by category, see the other objects, it looks like it's higher this year.
The, the eighty-two thousand that you were looking at was from October to October. This one's year-to-date.
Okay.
So, what it could have been was just the timing of, of, the main categories in there are audit fees, insurance, and county audits. So, it could have been just a timing of when something was booked.
I just like to ask those kind of questions, because I want to impress the CPAs on the board.
No problem, ask, ask away. But overall, I mean, for, on a year-to-date standpoint, it's about the same. So, that eight, eighty-two thousand was from, from October on a month-to-month basis. So, it could have been just a timing when something was booked.
Okay.
And then the last, the last item I have, student fees. Through November seventh, we have three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars of current, or total student fees outstanding. Two hundred ninety-two of which are occurring year. Students have until the day before Christmas, Christmas break to get that paid. So, that balance is normal for this time of year. The remaining balance of sixty-five thousand, one seventy-one is prior year outstanding fees. Of that amount, we have, of that amount, four hundred, it's made up of four hundred students. Of that total, fifty-five students are on a payment plan for seventy, or seventeen thousand. So, re, so really, we have fifty thousand outstanding from prior year, if you, if you account for the ones that are on a payment plan making payments. So, from the beginning of the school year in July, that was close to a hundred thousand. So, we, so we knocked, so we knocked it down within the last five to six months to where we are now. Still looking for other opportunities to keep bringing that number down, but we, we've been making progress on bringing that down.
I commend you and Cameron for taking that on, putting out a policy. And I would just tell that the, the students and the parents of the fifty, some students or whatever, or the, whatever it was, whatever's left out of the seventeen thousand that are on payment plans, the remainder of fifty thousand dollars worth need to talk to you or to Dawn and get on a payment plan, or you will be hearing from us.
I'm just having access to Power School alone. I mean, I, I look at that every day, at my daughter's grades, and the tests that she takes, and what's coming up, and, you know, I know she's self-sufficient and all that stuff, but just monitoring that, I mean, get caught up, get back on there, get in the game.
Well, it's just, with me, it's a point, because it's not fair to the people who do pay. The people who do make timely payments for the books and things that those fees are helping with. It's not fair to the rest of the folks that do pay that. If you have a hardship, we have a way for you to handle that. We're not trying to break anybody and, or take food off the table, but at the same time, if there's scoff laws out there, they need to fess up.
All right. Any further questions?
Yep, we're good.
All right.
So, moving on to item B, new funds for this fiscal year. So, I have quite a few this time, or four to be exact, and the first one is a Fund fourteen, nine, zero, zero, three, and for facilities usage for field turf and stadium rentals. Right now, we do have one similar for when our facilities are rented out. It's a zero fourteen, nine, zero, zero, two. Decide to keep a separate one for the field turf and the stadium, just to keep those dollars separate from that. That way, we can use those dollars back to the turf and the stadium. So, just counting for it separately.
George, in the last week, we've rented that facility out twice, correct?
Um, I think more than twice. There was a, I think, soccer game, maybe two soccer games, and a football game, and a football game this upcoming.
And how much do you think the total revenue from those will be?
The football games is about two thousand apiece. They're following our rental schedule. And the soccer games were on an hourly basis. And I can't remember the rate that-
So, we're somewhere around five thousand dollars plus concession is the low estimate. So, that's, I mean, that's, that's nice. I mean, that's, getting to utilize these facilities is, is going to pay off.
Yes.
For our students and for, you know, a lot of different ways.
And I just want to make this comment. You brought the turf in, we got it all, we, we received the funding through donations. But there's such a drastic difference between when I started on this board three years ago and today. We're actually creating additional accounts so that we can track our expenses, so that we can be prepared in ten years when that turf needs to be maintained, and, I hate to say it like this, but as a not small entrepreneur, we're treating it like a business. This is an additional revenue stream for us, we want to protect it. So, it just makes me smile. Thank you very much for creating it and the due diligence that it's going to take to, you know, watch the fund.
The next one is a Fund nineteen, nine, nine, zero, two. That's a Fund nineteen series of grant accounts. It's for a Teach, Learn, Grow grant, Tower Garden. An intervention specialist at the middle school, Sabrina Connor, she applied for this grant and was awarded. Just counting for it in this grant, the grant required us to report on the expenses back, so just keeping a separate account, just to account the, just to track the expenses. And the next two are district managed student activities. The first one's Ohio Career, Career Association at the high school. This account already exists under the two hundred series, student managed student activity. It's truly a district manage. So, it's essentially setting it up to how, how it should be, and there's going, there's going to be a transfer as well coming up in the agenda for that. And then the next one is three hundred nine, nine, two, nine, Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. This is for the Family and Consumer Science Education, part of that program. The advisor is Kimberly Swigard, and the purpose is that the club will promote personal growth and leadership development through the family consumer education. Any questions on any of those? Grant approval, this is to approve the, to formally approve the grant that the intervention teacher applied for, the Teach, Learn, Grow grant. It can be found in Exhibit B. The next is the transfer fund. It's taking the cash balance for the Ohio Career Association from the two hundred series of funds, moving into a three hundred. And item E, Student Activity Program Budget Revision. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the following Student Activity Program Budget Revision for fiscal year seventeen be approved. This is for Whitney Elementary. They had a successful fundraiser and received more cash, so this is bringing up their budget to their cash levels. Item F, this is to approve the budget for the two new student activity accounts that I just mentioned that we were creating. The Ohio Career Correction, the budget is three thousand seven fifty, which was similar to the one that was in the Series two hundred. And the Family Consumer Science, their budget, two thousand two fifty. Those can be found in Exhibit D. And then, item G, which is Exhibit F, is adjustments to the permanent appropriation measure. And go briefly over them, but it's detailed out on the exhibit of what those changes are. Again, it's for the Fund fourteen, the facilities usage, the Fund nineteen, the grant. Additional Fund O twenty-two, I didn't mention this, didn't talk about it through the other listings, but Fund twenty-two for the OSHA tournaments, increasing that by a hundred thousand dollars for additional tournament rentals, which are at Pacotan Stadium. So, essentially, these tournament games, although we get the rental fee, any proceeds that come out of it have to go back through to OSHA. We net out our, we keep our expenses and then just send them a net check back. So, in order for me to cut the check, I have, have appropriation to do so. And then, Fund two hundred, the increase for Whitney, Fund three hundred for the two new grants, and then the, then the five hundred accounts, the federal grants. The prior year carryover adjustments have been released by OD, so adjusting for those. Any questions so far?
And it's very expensive to rent our facilities, right? That check back to OSHA is going to be reasonable?
Yeah. Yeah, we have to follow our schedule.
No rental.
But they get the gate, so that, I mean, we keep, we keep our rental fee, we cover all our expenses, and then we net that all out of the gate, and then we refund back the gate, net of our expenses, net of our-
Yeah, and it goes both ways. If there wasn't enough gate to cover the expenses, we essentially invoice them and they send us back a check.
Or kept whole.
And then the last item I have is an addendum. And I apologize for the addendum, got this in a little late. First, I'll, I'll read it, then I'll explain it. So, item H, Resolution Providing for the Issuance of Sale of Bonds. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in maximum aggregate principal amount of sixty-nine million, one hundred eighty-five thousand, for the purpose of refunding at a lower interest cost certain of the school district's school improvement bond Series two thousand thirteen, which were issued for the purpose of rehabilitating, adding to furnishing, equip, equipping and otherwise improving buildings and facilities, and preparing, equipping and otherwise improving real estate and interests therein for school district purposes, authorizing the call for optional redemption of refunded bonds, authorizing for the execution, delivery of a bond register agreement, and bond purchase agreement with respect to the refunding bonds, and escrow, escrow agreement with respect to refunding, of the refunded bonds, and authorizing the preparation, use, distribution of an official statement relating to thereto. So, after all that, I'll just kind of explain what all that means. So, basically, here it says that, in the resolution, it has the sixty-nine million, one eighty-five. Legally, that's what I had to put in there. That's our total callable bonds outstanding at this point. What we're going for, what we're looking to refund is a series of bonds. Within this eighty-one million dollars that we issued, they're made up of various series, different bonds with, all that have different callable dates that matches up to our, our payment schedule, and we have to repay the bonds. So, what we're doing is a bank qualified refunding. Each year, we can go, each calendar year, we can't, we can go up to ten million dollars. So, of that sixty-nine million, we were looking to do ten million dollars. At that time, that ten million dollars, when we started this process in September, that ten million dollars was going to get us the savings in interest, about five and a half percent. The, the GFOWA benchmarks out there, and GFOWA stands for Government Finance Association, Officers Association, they kind of put out a benchmark on when municipalities and government agencies should look into doing refinancing, a three to five percent. When you do one of these, you have to prepare an official statement. It's a ninety-page report. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go into it, as long as after that official statement's repaired, go into a rating agency, getting your rating update or confirmed. So, we had begin that, we had began that prac, process and was kind of just now wrapping it up. Since then, the market has flipped, so now they reran our analysis. We're under the three percent benchmark, just shy of the three percent. So, right now, we're going to go into a holding pattern, we're going to finish our official statement, and then go into a holding pattern. And then, if the market does adjust to move forward, what this resolution does is gives me the authority to move forward when the time is right. Doesn't, if you, if it's a, if you give me the authority, it doesn't mean I have to do it. It just gives me the authority to move forward if the market adjusts.
So, essentially, that was a lot of words. And essentially, what we're doing is we want to refinance-
Right.
-the bonds that we issued, the exact same bonds that we issued. We want to refinance them, to see if we can get a lower interest rate to save the district and the taxpayers money. If we can, we will. If we can't, we won't. And that's all it is. So, we're just going to move it forward through that.
Is that for the sixty-nine million, or is it ten million of the sixty-nine?
Ten million of the sixty-nine.
Okay.
So, we could, what we were trying to do was do ten million this calendar year, and then ten million next calendar year. And it would have, this ten million would have generated about a half a million dollars over the life of the bond. So, it would have been a half a million this year and a half a million next year.
Thank you so much for looking into that, because that's, that could be a huge savings. Just keep your eye on it. Excellent work. Appreciate it.
Well, we still need to pass the resolution.
So, it's quite a separate vote, it's not on the consent.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, George. Thank you, thank you, George, for the first. Thank you, Duke, for the second. Any further discussion, any questions for you or anyone? Uh, vote.
Mr. Grozan?
Yes.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Good job, George. Thank you.
All right, I think I'm back up. Mr. Neso with the superintendent's report. Couple of items under timely information. First of all, I just wanted to talk a little bit to the board about our trademark licensing agreement. As we remember, a few months ago, Andy Jawon came and shared our new athletic logo, which is a custom design for us. So, the steps that we took, if you remember, last month, you agreed, or we signed a contract with our designer, that he gave us all the rights to the logo. That was the first step. Right now, one of our lawyers has filed a national trademark on behalf. Now, just to clarify, what we can trademark is the actual logo. That's it. We can't trademark Strongsville. We can't trademark Mustangs. We can't trademark Strongsville Mustangs. So, even though you saw like on our logo, it says, you know, Strongsville Mustangs, or it may say Strongsville Football, or Strongsville Basketball, all the, all that is ours that we are working to own is the actual Mustang, based on trademark laws that's out there that we can say was, was uniquely ours. So, that's in the process. What we have to do is every time we purchase or design a new piece of cloth, the new use of it, we have to take a picture and submit it to our, our lawyer. So, when we had the T-shirt, we took a picture of that. The middle school just got a scorer's table and chairs with the logo. We took a picture of that, again, to designate ownership of the district. So, we've been getting a lot of requests for use of our new logo. We have not granted any of those requests, because I think we need to take our time and be diligent about who has access to that logo and who does not. So, we've, Andy and, and I have nicely responded that we are still working through the process, and at this time, we're not going to give access to the logo. There's two things that we need to recommend to the board, and ultimately, the board needs to agree upon. First of all, is the trademark agreement as to who will have access to our logo and for what purposes. We have found a draft policy that's out there, and it's my recommendation that we take that draft policy to the policy committee and have them vet that, see what makes sense for our district, and then that actual policy of how we will use, who will have access to it, and what, for what purpose, will come back to the board through a policy recommendation and be approved or recommended for vote to the board when that time comes. So, that's part one, is just the policy piece of it. The second part of it is actually a licensing agreement. So, as a part of that policy in some sort of fashion, if the policy committee so chooses, there could be a recommendation that states, these groups could use this, but if they're using it to make a profit, they have to pay a licensing fee or a royalty fee, and there's different structures of that, whether it's a flat fee to a percentage of sales, and then even within that percentage of sales, there's record-keeping stipulations of, do you have to report your sales annually, or quarterly, or biannually, whatever it may be? We're also recommending that the policy committee make a recommendation as to what the licensing structure would be, and recommend that to the board for discussion and vote. Again, deciding what type of structure it will be, what type of percentage or flat fee it would be. So, that is where we're- So, that is where we're at with the trademark and licensing agreement. I know people are wanting the apparel. Andy Jawon has opened up another online Mustang apparel shop for the holiday season, if anybody wants to buy their Mustang gear. They've expanded, last time it was T-shirts and sweatshirts and long-sleeved T-shirts. I think there's a, you know, fleece and zip-up, you know, fleece jackets, and, so they've expanded the offerings. I know he put it out on his Twitter, Dan and I'll get together and put it out on Facebook, but there'll be an online apparel shop for us that we will have, but the rest of it, we would ask that it would go through the policy committee and then be recommended to the board through that group. I open it up for questions or feedback from the board on whether you approve, or whether you have modifications to that idea.
I mean, the only thing I'd recommend to the policy committee, what I'd like to see, I mean, the distinction, exactly how we did it with the use of our facilities, is if you're using our facilities for a commercial purpose, there's a different rate than if it's the Boy Scouts, or you know, another group like that, that's using it. And the same thing with this policy, if you're using our logo and you're making a profit off it, then the district should share in a, in a very, in a very small portion of that, right? I think that's the right thing to do. I would like to get this policy to move through quickly, because there are, you know, areas, there are people who'd like to use this logo, and we'd like them to use the logo as quickly as possible. I did notice the other day that Target is starting to sell Mustang apparel. So, you know, before Target starts making money on the district, we need to get this thing done and, and recognize the royalty for that, if they're gonna, if that's what's gonna happen.
We actually do have, that's a good point that you bring up. There i, there is another company, they actually just sent us, for the first time that we can remember, a licensing agreement. Again, we don't have control over all of that, because they're not using copyrighted logos.
Right.
They, as frustrating as it may, you know, when I, when I spoke to our, our legal team, and, you know, Strongsville Mustangs are us, and they said, it is, but you can't copyright it, it's too general in terms, it's too general in nature. So, they do actually give us royalties, one company, it's, we don't get a huge amount of money. George, do you have any-
It's a few hundred dollars, isn't it? Yeah, it's a few hundred dollars, it's, it's the, it's the company that has it in Drug Mart, Rite Aid, probably Target.
Oh, okay.
That licensing program has a connection with the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and it's the national high school licensing thing, and their whole purpose is to help school districts receive some kind of revenue stream when people do use the, the logo, or the, or the Strongsville Mustangs type stuff. So, you'll see the tag, and we looked into it before, and I think it's a couple thousand a year.
No, it's a couple, a couple hundred.
Couple hundred a year.
Couple hundred, we'll take it.
But, that's better than nothing.
Right.
And I was just gonna piggyback on Carl's comments. The one thing that I'd wanna see is, let's be prepared to see, trademark lawyers aren't inexpensive, so at least as a, as a beginning benchmark, we should expect to at least cover the expense of that, of those costs, as far as trademark lawyer, et cetera, and, you know, running around, taking a picture of everything and sending it in, let's have some kind of benchmark of, of what that burden is for the district, so that at least we can structure the licensing to be cognizant of that amount. I don't think anyone wants to imagine we're gonna make tons of income off of this.
Right.
But I do think it's important that we protect our logo and make sure that, you know, I, I don't think we would wanna see it for alcohol, I don't think we would wanna see it for things that we don't think are appropriate at a, as an educational institution.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to think small either. I mean, see what the market will bear.
Oh, absolutely.
After all, it's capitalism, go for it.
Absolutely, but I, I think the market is limited.
And also, I mean, my comment I said at one sorority today, treat it like a business, right? Where the Strongsville taxpayers are entrusting us with their dollars and cents, we need to protect what intangible assets we have. Make sure the policy committee, when you guys go through it, I mean, that'll be the benchmark, good or indifferent, those are the rules, that's what's on the piece of paper, let's live and abide, you know, live abide by it, and then we can make modifications to it later. The only other question I have is, just 'cause we're talking about it, Andy's, I know you guys are gonna bring out the information later, but what website is he using? How can we announce it right now? What, do you have any idea what the website is, to be able to get to that apparel that he's putting together, or he has out there right now?
Yeah, it's a BSN Sports website, there's a code that you could put in to get to the actual Mustang apparel, I think it may be Mustang even.
No.
No?
No?
No.
Then just get it to us.
There should be a link to it from our-
So, we'll put it on, it, it's on, Dan can retweet his tweet while we're sitting here, so we can get it out there, and then we can get it on Facebook, yeah.
Perfect.
'Cause it is perfect timing right now.
And our website.
Yeah, and our website.
It's Christmas time, right? It's perfect timing to, to be able to do that, and-
It's nice that you bought me something, George.
Yeah. And the nice thing is, some of the proceeds of that apparel, it comes back to us, right? So, the other thing I'm gonna challenge you guys on is, how do we track that money? Where's that money gonna go? What are we gonna do with it, right? So, there's some opportunities there, like, like Duke said, I don't think it's just a few bucks, I think it could be something, but I leave it in your hands of what we should do with it.
Okay.
Cool. It's in the policy committee hand, hands now. Jane, Richard?
Yep, I've already been researching.
Excellent.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's BSN TeamSports.com, but it's a, it's a long little user password, so we'll put it out there for everybody.
Okay.
All right, the second item that I had for discussion is District Lacrosse. A few years ago, we remembered that the board made the decision to approve lacrosse as a high school sport. It's conditionally approved by OHSAA this year, as being recognized by high school sport. So, we are now going into our, this spring will be our third season of lacrosse. Last season, both the, we, we right now only employ two coaches, a varsity girls' coach and a varsity boys' coach. Jeff and Joe came to meet with me last, about this time last year, and said that they felt they had the numbers to have a JV program. At that time, we weren't sure whether they were sustainable or not, we told them that we could schedule JV games, they can have a JV ta, team, but we wanted to see a little lengthier process before we would agree. Those two gentlemen volunteered their time, they were JV coaches for free, so they, they both coached the JV and varsity, and they've shown the sustainable numbers that I believe deserve the district looking at adding two more coaches to the lacrosse program. So, I provided for the board some, some information from Andy Jawon from the high school to share. We're projecting for our boys this season, forty-seven total players, and we typically look at a varsity roster of twenty-five kids. Girls, we're looking at a roster of forty girls. We don't cut any students in our lacrosse program, and as you can see, we currently have two hundred and fifty grades, three through eight, athletes in our youth lacrosse program, so the numbers are there to continue the future of the program. Obviously, with our new turf field, we've been able to increase the number of home events. So although, you know, the recommendation to the board of adding a JV lacrosse for boys, and a JV lacrosse paid position for girls, does add an expense, there also is increased revenue through increased pay-to-participate fees, there's increased revenue through increased gate fees for the district, and the reality is, we had a JV lacrosse program last year, so there are some incidental costs, but there's no real increase in transportation. I know Andy's working with the boosters in terms of uniforms, like he does for other sports. So this is a discussion item, but it is my intent, if the board so wishes, to bring this back in in December for an official vote, but it's at the stage of this sport's life that next year, I believe we're ready, or this spring, for JV, and ultimately, looking forward, all of our sports, most of them have a freshman JV and varsity program, so if we're gonna support JV lacrosse like it's intended, it's inception a few years ago, this is the next phase of building that program, which would be adding JV coaches. So now I open it up to discussion or questions from the board.
And I would, I would say, I'm all for you bringing it back to us in December. It's been an outstanding program, and the group that supports it has been outstanding as well. So, I mean, I just, I'm, I, I wanna do a little more research, I'm gonna look into the costs, I wanna look into, maybe have some discussion on that a little later or something.
Mr. Neso, thank you for bringing that up, I did forget to mention, the cost of the two coaches would be a little over eighty-six hundred dollars. So that's the, George, you have the exact figure, I believe, over there?
Yeah, you're right, eighty-six thousand, or eighty-six hundred.
Yeah.
Eighty-six hundred.
That's a serious lacrosse coach.
Eighty-six hundred.
Right around eighty-six hundred additional costs.
Make sure everyone's paying attention.
I had a question. Do the JV teams play the same time, like, the day that the varsity plays, or is it like the football, how it's a different night of the week, or?
My understanding is, is how they've explained it to me, is it's, they would play on the same day, they would tra, it wouldn't be increased bus cost, because I believe they're traveling to the same location.
So they have a JV game, and then they have a varsity game?
That's how I, that's how I believe it happens, yeah.
And then, do all of the schools in our conference currently have lacrosse teams, or are we playing the same schools four times, or?
No, they're, uh, what do we talk, Jenny? I think there's one school in our conference that doesn't have a lacrosse program? I think there's one that doesn't, but it, we're not playing, we're not having to travel all over the, this region to, to play. There's plenty of competition, you know, and we've been playing the different competition the last few years, it's just now we're able to have them at our place more-
Right.
-because of the field.
Right, would they ever be able to utilize the middle school field as well, or if it-
If needed, yeah.
Okay.
They, the middle school field is an exact replica of the high school field with lacrosse lines and everything, we would just, part of Andy's proposal for his work is, he's gotta get a couple more goals, nets for the program, which are not all that expensive, but that's the only thing we don't have at the middle school, is the actual nets.
Okay, thank you.
I'm all for it, I think it's a great thing.
So am I.
All right, so I will, I'm sorry, Richard.
That's all right. The only thing, if you could bring either an update or at the next meeting, you know, the Strongsville Lacrosse Association was instrumental in bringing the program and funding it to get started. So we're gonna have a, a period where their contribution stops, and then it becomes truly a, the entire expense is, is going to be borne by the school district. If we could just see those numbers in the timeline on when that happens, you know, adding JV is gonna add, as, as far as our cost, it looks like less than ten thousand dollars. I just wanna make sure we're clear that there aren't any other incidental that is gonna take it way above that, and then I still would like to see when we're gonna bear the entire cost of lacrosse, and what, what that looks like, more, more in the sense that we need to look at our pay-to-participate. We've always tried to target that to cover, to cover the, the salary expenses, as a rule of thumb, I just wanna make sure we're still on target for that.
I, we will send that out, George and Andy have worked to do exactly that, so we can get that out to an update, so you can see all the details. Any other questions on lacrosse? Okay, thank you. The last thing under timely information for me is Technical Advisory Committee. So, Brian Tamino and Mark Smithberger at the high school have worked to align our career tech programs that we house in the district to the state standards and guidelines to get reimbursement dollars, as well, as Richard knows from Polaris, and as the case with, with our programs, there's a technical advisory committee. You bring in people in the field of the programs that you have to provide guidance, support, dialogue. I believe the board got an invitation to that first meeting, which is gonna occur on the twenty-ninth. But per the Ohio Revised Code, this technical advisory committee needs to be board-recognized. So be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that a career, you authorize a career technical advisory committee, the purpose of this committee shall be to engage business, industry, and post-secondary representatives, to utilize input from professional associations, labor, government, and the community, and that's a part of the consent agenda. So I didn't know if there's any questions about that.
I just was gonna comment, I did talk with Bob Timmons at Polaris, and he's excited about it also, because it, it truly is supposed to be complimentary and collaborative, the programs that are in-house at Strongsville, making sure that we work together to have a better overall result.
Great.
With that, I'll ask our business manager, Mark Donnelly, to come share his report for this month. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Reba. Business Services tonight only has two items on the agenda. The first item is transportation, non-public students to declare the, transportation for certain students impractical and to authorize payment in lieu of. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, school bus transportation for the listed students on Exhibit F, and the following, you know, on the following exhibit be declared impractical. The time and distance required to provide transportation, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration, and the additional service unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Be it further resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Board of Education, in lieu of providing transportation, pays parents of students attending these school, schools. The reimbursement will be based on the amount allotted by the state. Item two under Business Services are gifts. The Rotary Club of Strongsville donated dictionaries to all district third-grade students. The Strongsville Dairy Queen, or DQ Grill and Child Restaurant on Pearl Road donated one hundred and fifty coupons, each for a free twelve-ounce Blizzard, which were distributed at the Strongsville City Schools greet and treat event. And local businesses and community members, as listed in the exhibit, donated to the Excellence in Athletics campaign, which was referred to earlier in the board meeting. Are there any questions? Okay, there, there are two announcements, real quick, that are off the agenda. The demolition of Albion has, will begin, the, the abatement has started, but the actual demolition of the building will begin in mid-December, December fifteenth, I believe. Bricks from the demolition will be set outside the fence of the demolition site, anybody wishing to get a brick as a memento from the building, more than invited to come by, pick up a brick for your, your memories of Albion. And lastly, on the agenda, or just an announcement, happy holidays to the board and the community from the Business Services Department, including Thanksgiving, be happy and safe through your holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank, you know, we've had a lot of opportunities over the past few months to bring our donors to the board that donated over twenty-five thousand dollars to our Excellence in Athletics, and they were a large part of what got this project off the ground and found success in the end. But what also built a lot of that, almost one point seven million dollars we collected, were people that donated twenty-five dollars, or a hundred dollars, or five hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars, or whatever that amount may have been, under twenty-five thousand. And so, as, as Mark shared, and is listed in Exhibit G, and as Dan is gonna share in our Mustang moments tomorrow, is highlighting the, the many individuals in our community that were so generous and gave towards that project, and so we just wanna publicly thank them for their work with us, their generosity, and their efforts to make both of those projects a reality for our students. So, on behalf of the board and all of us in the district, thank you to everybody that donated to the Excellence in Athletics campaign. Moving on, Andy and Aaron are both at two different conferences, this is the week of conferences in Columbus, a group was down at the Capital Conference earlier this week, Andy's at Special Education Conference, Aaron's at a school improvement con, conference down in Columbus, and they keep on texting and sharing their ideas that they're learning, so we're excited to get them back and hear all that they've learned. But we do have a few items under curriculum, two, first one is a student-teacher methods field placement, these are the shorter-duration experiences, just to see what teaching's all about before your student teaching. So, we've got one student from Cleveland State that will be in, in a couple weeks, to be with Pat Cook, music teacher at Chapman. Under number two, we have student-teacher placements coming up after the first of the year. Baldwin Wallace, student teacher, will be with Lisa Stonich and Tim Sorge at the high school. And in music, we have a University of Akron student that's gonna be with Renee Roble as well. So those are the items for curriculum, unless there's questions. Under Student Services, we have three items for your consideration. First of all, to enter into agreement with Berea City School District for tuition excess cost agreement for admission of a student with disabilities for the two thousand sixteen, seventeen school year. Now, just as a point of clarity, when this happens, this is because a student that is, family lives in Strongsville is placed, whether it's through a court placement, or foster parent, or guardian alightum in a school district for the best needs of the student, and so we have these agreements that we must approve. student. And so we have these agreements that we must approve. That is why we are paying Berea to educate a Strongsville student. Number two, Cogu County Board of Developmental Disabilities. We enter an agreement with them to provide technical support, and team supports to eligible individuals with developmentally, developmental disabilities. That would start January seventeen and run through December seventeen, and can be found in Exhibit I. And finally, number three, Medina Creative Accessibility. This be resolved, the recommendation, we enter an agreement for the placement of students and their vocational training work sites. So what this means is we by law educate, or have the opportunity to educate students with disabilities all the way through age twenty-two. Even before they reach age twenty-two, it's important to develop not just skills in a school setting, but in a work setting. Medina Creative Living has been a great program that's been developed. They have a greenhouse. They have, I believe they have a dog daycare facility. They have a variety of work-study programs where, where young adults and adults with disabilities can go there and learn skills to be independent or semi-independent. And we're, our transition coordinator, and has worked with them last year to bring a, a relationship so our Strongsville students can go down and participate. So as it says, this is the purpose of providing students with disabilities, the opportunity to learn, property maintenance, horticulture, animal care, coffee roasting, cafe, and daily living skills in an authentic, community-based setting. So we're excited about that opportunity for our students, and that's in Exhibit J. Any questions on Student Services?
None.
All right. With that, turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with her Human Resource Report.
Thank you, Mr. Reba. I have the following items for your consideration this evening. Under E1, we have the retirement of Mrs. Doris Bilecki, intervention specialist and detention monitor, assigned to Strongsville High School. We will recognize her in May, but this will be effective November thirtieth for Dolores. Under E2, we have the following appointments of non-certificated staff. And continued under E2, we have certificated substitutes, as well as additional non-certificated substitutes. Continuing under E2, we have one tutor appointment of Haley Pinero. We have certificated supplemental contracts. One certificated supplemental contract paid upon completion for our pep band director. And one appointment for a non-certificated supplemental contract paid upon completion for our assistant boys' cross-country coach. Under E3, we have several changes in hours of our non-certificated staff. Those are our drivers. We had route bidding this past month. Under E4, we have some non-certificated changes in status. Under E5, we have one salary upgrade for our certificated teacher. Under E6, continuing contract recommendations for two non-certificated staff members. Under E7, we have one injury leave. Under E8, two medical certificated leaves, and three non-certificated medical leaves. One unpaid medical leave of our certificated staff, and two unpaid non-certificated medical leaves. Under E9, one volunteer coach, as well as additional volunteer chaperones. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
I have one question, Jenny.
Sure.
On these injuries.
Yes.
And I've asked Cameron this before, too.
Sure.
I think, it's on-the-job injury, correct?
Um, yes.
Okay, do we have a...
For, under E7, you're speaking of?
Yeah. Do we have a process to investigate and see if there's any safety practices that need to be changed, to make sure that everybody's working safely?
We did investigate that one, and we ensured that the items that, that, the issue that caused this injury was taken care of.
Okay. And change policy or anything that we need to do, or change process? Or is it a one-time fix?
It was a one-time fix for this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
One of the things, Colonel Evans, that we've done, you know, based on your suggestion is, you know, we did, Mark is working with one of our insurance companies to look at safety checklists around the building. So not only do we have internal recommendations, but they also, as an insurance carrier, have recommendations. So they've done some preliminary walks of the buildings, and they're producing and going to give us their safety checklist to, for our custodial and maintenance staff. So that's something Mark's department is going to take and blend with our own stuff to have for our own maintenance, custodial staff, to ensure, you know, not only the, the reactive after the fact, but that proactive piece of making sure we're checking through, everything's in orders it should be.
Well, proactive, be reactive every time.
Right.
I've heard that before.
Mr. Reba, if I may, too. As part of that, too, through the BWC, that a representative from the district has to attend a safety council meeting once a month. And Mark has been going as a representative of the district for those, those trainings. And it also lowers our premium if we made perfect attendance as well.
So far, we're perfect. The, the last item is technology. We don't have any reports for this month under technology, unless there's questions from the board on technology. All right. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Cameron. Thank you, Jenny. That brings us to Polaris. Richard?
Uh, my, uh, single update on Polaris today is to thank the voters. And I'm going to echo Carl's words. I'm going to thank everyone who voted, period. I'm going to thank those who voted yes, and I'm going to encourage those who voted no to pay attention. Our continuous improvement, uh, issue did pass. This is the second time it went on. And we will now go to the same process that we did here in Strongsville to improve the Polaris facility, along with having the funding to improve the programs and the technology required for the programs at the various satellite schools. But it's a very exciting time for Polaris and, and everything they do. And my, uh, my commitment to the, to the taxpayer and the community is to make sure that all of the, all of the improvements we do at Polaris, we, we use that same process we did here in Strongsville. And that's to make sure we get every, every last penny of value that we can for the, for our residents. But it's important to say thank you to everybody who voted, and thank you to everybody who voted yes. And that completes my Polaris update.
Thank you. Now, legislation?
Legislation, similar, quick update. Congratulations are in order for our new state senator, Matt Dolan, and our new state rep, Tom Patton, who will both take office in January. So congratulations to them, and we look forward to working with them in the upcoming year. It will be a challenging year with the next biennium budget will be the main, the main issue that we'll deal with next year. There is a lame duck session of the Ohio, Ohio House and Senate going on. And the, the one, the one issue that I'd like to highlight is, where did it go?
It's gone.
It's not gone. I'm trying to get the right number, but it will address truancy, it'll address suspensions and expulsions, and it'll change how, uh, schools have to deal with that. And it'll require intervention teams. And the idea is to cut down on the number of suspensions and expulsions, and, uh, address, uh, students that are being, that are having a high rate of truancy, and then they end up being suspended and trying to figure out a more proactive way to keep the students in school. When those things happen, it's detrimental to the children's education. We were at Capitol Conference, and Peggy, Peggy, Senator Peggy Lerner highlighted the fact, there's some nine thousand students in grades one through three who are suspended every year. And so, I don't, I don't think that is the kind of statistic we have here in Strongsville, but that is why this, the, at a state level, they're looking at it.
For truancy?
Part of me?
Grades one through three, for truancy?
No, they're suspended for whatever reason, you know, for whatever behavior reason or what have you. And the bill is going to deal with truancy, and is going to deal with suspensions, and...
Yeah, I, I read that today, Richard. And honestly, maybe I'm just soapboxing here, but this is a good example of the legislature meddling where they shouldn't be in local school district affairs, in my opinion. Because, you know, high school kids that are truant or whatever, either you get, you hold them accountable, or you hold the parents accountable, or both. And it's not the school's duty to be a babysitter and to do the intervention that the parent should be doing to start with, to make sure that their kids attend school. So I had a lot of heartburn with this thing, for starters, because I think too many times, the easy solution is to put the onus on the school district to act in lieu of parents who should be taking responsibility for the children they brought into the world. So that, that just bugs the heck out of me, and I cleaned it up for public consumption.
Thank you.
But...
Well, what I will, what I will finish my report with is, is we now know Colonel Evans has an opinion.
You betcha.
And if you have an opinion, you should let your representatives know also.
Yes. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. City Council, Jane?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Naiso. City Council had a meeting, they're discussing several different zoning options and changes in the city. There's going to be a public hearing on December nineteenth at the City Council Chamber. So if you're interested in having your opinion be heard on that issue, I suggest you attend the City Council meeting. But more importantly, this Sunday, Santa Claus is coming to town. If you'll notice, the center of the square has been all decorated, and there will be Santa and Mrs. Claus. And there's going to be a train that will take you through the Freedom Trail. The Historical Society will be open, and all the houses are decorated in their Christmas finery. And there will be fireworks that are set to music this year.
Saturday or Sunday, you said?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
And it's all graciously paid for by the business community of Strongsville, so it's not being paid for by tax dollars. So it starts at five o'clock. I believe Santa is coming at five-thirty, and fireworks will be when it's dark enough for fireworks. So I hope everyone can come out and enjoy the season with your fellow community members. It's not just for the little ones, it's for all.
I've been very good this year.
Yeah.
I look forward to seeing it.
Well, I doubt that.
Only Santa knows.
Okay, that, PTA, please?
Yes. They had another, you know, they're going right along like PTA does with all their schools and all their good that they're doing. And this current season, they are collecting fleece blankets that are donated to the Strongsville Food Bank. So their goal is two hundred fleece blankets. They collected almost that last year. Every school will have a box or collection place, so if you would like to help in that cause, please participate. And they're collecting blankets through December second. And that concludes my PTA Council report.
How about student achievement?
Oh, wow. We have a great student achievement report this month.
Oh, excellent.
And again, Mr. Faust has graciously assisted me by taking photographs. As many of you are aware, November, this is Veterans Month, and more specifically, we had Veterans Day. But it coincides with a curriculum that states every student must be taught about Veterans Day and what it means. And Deborah Gonzi is the music teacher at Whitney Elementary School, and she takes this lesson very seriously. She gets the entire school on board, and they start a month before Veterans Day, and get the art teachers involved and all the classroom teachers. And it's quite an experience. So what she does is, all the classes, they learn songs that are patriotic songs. But first of all, it starts with being taught what a veteran is, and how important it is to hold other veterans in esteem. They invite their members of their family that are veterans. And they had over fifty veterans at their school this year. And many of these people stated that they had never had anyone be so proud of them. I mean, it chokes me up, it's just so remarkable. But then she gets the art teacher involved. And all the classes make class flags. And they're taught about the symbolism of how important symbols are. So they put much thought into what their flags are. So you'll see some pictures here of their students and their, their class flags. That nice aerial view shot is, they had a flag-raising ceremony, and they clapped all the veterans in, and they had, it was just a very touching, moving time. She sends home a questionnaire for the veterans to fill out, and she asks them, what is something that the students can do to show respect for veterans? What is something you wished every Whitney student knew about America? And what is your favorite memory from serving in the military? And she shares that with all of the students. One of the things that a veteran stated is, he wished that the preamble of the Constitution was known, every child should know it, that it is important because it contains the three most important words of the Constitution, "we, the people," which means everyone. And this particular veteran was very humbled when the student stood up and sang a song about the preamble of the Constitution. So it was very well received, and I, I thank her for, um, her commitment to the veterans in our community.
Best job, Jane. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jane.
I, I could add to that. I went to the middle school, and they did a great job as well. It was really nice to see the kids coming up to the veterans that were in attendance and saying thank you for their service. And one of our custodians was the guest speaker, who happened to be a veteran also from, from there. He's been there, what, twelve years, Tim? Been there, been there a custodian for us for twelve years. And he was the guest speaker for the kids. And I just thought it was great. And staff did a wonderful job. Mr. Dietrich, Mr. Vukovich, everybody was very, very nice. They put on a nice little luncheon for the veterans that were present. And I was there more as a, as a school board member than a, than a veteran, but it was nice to see that. And it was great to see the kids, the way they responded. So thanks to everybody, and thanks to Deb for a wonderful effort.
Excellent. Great report, Jane. I wish the finance committee meeting was nearly as exciting as that. It never is. There wasn't one, there wasn't a finance committee meeting.
You can throw your two cents in.
Yeah. I don't believe there was a policy committee meeting.
No, but there will be.
We do have a...
Oh, yes?
We do have a report. Thursday, December first, from six-thirty to eight, in the superintendent's office, there will be a policy committee meeting. And I have a feeling we're going to discuss licensing agreements.
Excellent. I'm sure that's going to be a rip-roaring time.
Hold on to your hat.
Exactly. Excellent. There was a facilities committee meeting last night. I'm, I'll start, and then, George, you want to finish up with, a couple of things in there we talked about was that, one, they, we're going to revisit our thirty-year plan coming up shortly. We're going to announce that, when exactly that's going to occur, because we'd like to get as much public participation as possible on that, in that event. So we'll, we'll be putting that out shortly. And another decision that was made, there were the pavers that were removed up from the high school. I believe they were at the high school, right? And these were pavers that were purchased, and they were through donations, somewhere back in like nineteen ninety-eight, I think, is when the pavers came out. And they've been removed through, with the renovations at the high school. And we saved as many of them as we could, or many of them. I don't know, there's a fifty of them I've got from that list.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-seven.
Whoa, more than fifty. Two-hundred-and-fifty-seven of them. And we have them, we're going to have them on pallets. And we'll have them laid out, and we're, anybody, we're going to publish the list, and anybody who'd like to retrieve their paver is more than welcome to come get it and, and, and keep it. But there's, we don't really have a location for them at this point, so we're going to distribute those back to whoever, if they'd like them back. And George, I think those are the two things that I, from the meeting, other items?
Our next meeting is December twenty-first, and I think it's...
Nope.
Cancel that one?
Cancel that one.
January twenty-sixth. The only comment that I want to make is, it's a board committee. It's open to the public. Participation is limited to the committee members that are on, that are, that are there. But the meeting's open to the public. And we did this on purpose. I mean, this board's design was to have a taxpayer voice when it comes to the brick and mortar of our facilities. So I encourage those who have an interest in what we're doing with the major assets of this school district, to come by and listen in. We do have a number of people that come in just to listen. And, and so, January twenty-sixth is the next date. And the high school, we're going to, okay, High School Media Center, January twenty-sixth. Also give you an opportunity to see our brand-new media center. We are going to be about sixty days ahead of schedule on that project. So instead of being done at the end of February, having construction, it should be done with our high school before Christmas break. Correct, Mark?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Excellent. That brings us to the consent calendar. All items with an asterisk are approved in one motion. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Duke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jane. It's not lent yet, so Richard, one second. Can I have a, any discussion? We didn't have any... We didn't have any modifications. So, let's take a vote.
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groze?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to Board of Education, other. I have a few items, but anybody have any? Number one, I just want to thanks, we're just so thrilled with the results of the election and having the approval of the levy is just thrilling, and it's such a vote of confidence. And we're going to continue to be good stewards, we're going to continue to get information out, we're going to continue to do all the things we do, and we're going to do better. We're going to get better and better at what we do, but we truly appreciate that. It's enormous. We don't, we don't take it lightly, and we are humbled and honored that it passed as well as it did. The second thing I'd like to talk about real quickly is, I'm looking over this list of donations for the Excellence in Athletics, and there's just, we talk about student, excuse me, our three goals, and the community involvement, and there's just, there's such a list of so many community members and businesses on this list, it's so incredible that everybody, you know, stepped up and helped us and recognized the need, and we delivered on it, and we still got some more work to do. We still have, we're still a little shy of our goal, not a significant amount, but we have, you know, we're on it, and we're going to continue to work. So, there's still room. This list is big, and it's impressive, but there's still room if you want to help, and we welcome your help. The last item on my list is something that was placed up here, and I'm just going to read the thing. The Strongsville High School Swimming and Diving Team would like to invite everyone to our Splash Out Cancer Dedication Meet on Wednesday, December 7 at 6:00 at the Strongsville Rec Center. They're going to swim in memory of Kelly Kinney, and 100% of these proceeds will go to the Sedman Cancer Center. It's such a good group. I mean, we've raised, you know, my daughter swims with the league, with the Strongsville, with the sea monkeys, and it's always such a good event. And I would just want to tell everybody who can come out that night, we could really use the help, and as for, there's no greater causes there, right? So, let's, if you've got some time and you want to help us, come on out, please. I don't have anything else other than that. Does anybody have any other items they want to?
I say this every year, as a Rotarian, it's our pleasure to donate dictionaries to the third graders. And George, I know, and I, and a few other Rotarians, it's one of those events that you never have a problem getting volunteers to come to the elementary buildings. The genuine appreciation and surprise when you hand a third grader a dictionary. I mean, it's a dictionary, guys, come on. And they are so excited.
Gold school.
It is. And I always make my way into Mrs. Commacy's class. She was a Zellers teacher, now she's over at Kinzner, and it's just, it's a wonderful moment, it's a wonderful, it's fun for us as Rotarians to give back, but to see those faces. Part of what we wanted to do here, you know, we extended our goals. I'll use Richard's thing, his brains and bucks, but also the community, right? Please volunteer. Please help us be the best school district we can be. You can have the worst day ever, worst week, worst month, and you walk into that classroom, and you see those faces and that innocence and the appreciation, and it's just, it's what makes doing this completely worth it. So, and everybody have a wonderful, happy Thanksgiving.
Holy lexicography, Batman.
Yes.
Carl, I have a... Yes, sir. ...one other. I just wanted to let the community know, I had the pleasure earlier this week of going to Capitol Conference in Columbus, and on Tuesday, Tuesday, November 15 at 1:00 PM, I went to a learning session, and I was really proud that it was taught or delivered by our own superintendent, Cameron Reiba, and our own Assistant Superintendent, Jenny Pelco, and the topic was improving employee relations. And it was riveting, it was excellent. The entire district, the entire community should be proud of them and proud of everything that that presentation represented. The highest praise that I can share is that the people in the room, it was packed, and, you know, a Capitol Conference learning session at 1:00 PM after lunch to get it packed is more than just difficult. But it was packed, and I saw person after person making notes, writing furiously, and taking, taking things back that they're going to do in their district. And we talk a lot about that our goal is to become a premier district, and this was a tangible step in us showing how you do that and how you do those many little steps and those many little things over and over again, and you build that collective trust, and you build that shared trust. And it truly was something to be commended for doing it, and I'm excited for what it says about our district moving forward, and I may even go to Capitol Conference again just so I can see next year's addition. But congratulations to them.
I can guarantee you'll go back next year again.
I'll be the alternate again.
Very good job.
Meeting notice, we have a regular board meeting on Thursday, December 8, right here. And I think that's it. Executive session? No.
We have no items.
No.
I knew you were looking forward to it.
With that, I would like a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Duke.
Second.
Thank you, Jane. Dick Roll?
Colonel Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mr. Neso?
Yes.
Mr. Groze?
Yes.
Motion. Carry, and meeting adjourned.
Everyone have a very nice Thanksgiving, holiday, and enjoy it, be with your family. Thank you.